You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 18th, 2024 meeting of Michigan City Housing Authority Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
All right, it's about 3 o'clock, so let's stand for the pledge and start our meeting. Mr. Vincent?
I'm a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the code for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like it should be a pretty quick meeting tonight. Let's start with the roll call. Mrs. Dixon?
Of course, I'm already. Mrs. Smith?
Just look at the name, Street.
So I don't have to be in any kind of order?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Benny?
Present.
Commissioner Reina?
Present.
Commissioner Lonnie?
Present.
Commissioner Vincent?
Present.
Four here, we've got it for them. Next up is the minutes. You guys get a chance to look at them before the meeting? Any issues, concerns, corrections?
I'd just like to make a comment. I have no problem with the minute, the content of the minute itself, except for under the new business. I just want to make note, when I call point of order for the topics that we were discussing regarding the lucrative positions and such, I noted in here, it says that Vice Chair Reina and Commissioner Vincent nodded their head in support of the topic. To my recollection, head body gestures and all of that has nothing to do with acknowledgement of either gay or net. Am I correct, Attorney Graves?
Generally, acknowledgements are spoken, just so that there's no confusion. It's, in a public meeting, it's the same as if it was the end of a deposition, it was shrug of the head, or shrug of the shoulders, nods of the head, things of that nature. But it's up to the agency ultimately how they wish to document it. But generally, no, it's not.
Okay. I just want to make note of that. And I didn't even know that that took place, though. But that's it for me.
Okay.
Other than that, most picks up.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, or no, we can't do that? Call the roll. Oh, wait.
Roll, go.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Benny?
Hi.
Vice Chair Ray? Reina?
Aye.
Chairman Lonnie?
Aye.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
It's our first meeting, we'll get through this. Chairman's open and ready. So we had our training, and I think that went really well. We learned a bunch. A lot of the agenda is based on what we went over training. There's a lot of things we need to address, we'll get into that tonight, or today, if like, doesn't lead into tonight. And, yeah, all in all, I'm glad we have the Executive Director, Mrs. Dixon, here. And let's get on with public comment. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak? Any members of the public that would like to speak? Nope? Okay. Any communications? Attorney Graves?
There have been, actually, two requests for, for public records that have come yet.
Okay.
Both of them are from our office and apparently were.
Sounds good. So we're under reports. Housing Choice Doctors?
Thank you, everyone. This month, we've spent, paid for the fee, 152,475. We actually spent 158,305. We have 248 people under voucher program under our list. We have three home ownership. We have 2,214 applicants on the waiting list, which drew 100,000 to dollars. We linked up 11. We still have 141 more searching. And we have two transfers and three contracts. Any questions?
I have a question. When it says 65%, 377 is that our maximum that we can have for our area?
Right, yes. I only have 2.60.
Do you know if that's based on our population, or how do they determine our maximum for vouchers? You know, it's not important, I was just curious, if you go off the top of your head. I just, I just thought it was important for me to know. 377 is our maximum. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Public Housing next?
Good evening. I must retire the public housing matter. As of now, our waiting list, this is for the public housing only waiting list, we have 2,330 applicants. As of March 31st, we selected 50, withdrawn 37. When I say withdrawn, that means that if they did not respond to the letter, mail came back, or no correspondence, and we withdraw the application. By eligibility was 13, and out of those 13, we have two new move-ins for the month of March. Developments, vacant estates, we have 37 out of 50 units occupied. We have 13 vacancies, and we have eight units that's in the MODs selection right now, I'm sorry. Evictions was one, however, with that eviction, I withdrew it because the tenant actually came in with the payment, and we created an payment agreement for her. Boulevard Garden, we have 81 out of 100 units that is occupied. We have 18 vacancies, and we had two move-ins for the month of March. Harvest Side Homes, we have 13 out of 15 units that's occupied, two vacancies, no evictions, no EOPs or anything. Harvest Side Duplexes, we have six out of six, all units are currently occupied. Our scattered units, we have 11 of 12 that are occupied, one vacant, and one that unit is also in MOD. And our homeownership, we have three out of seven units that's occupied for our vacant, and we have zero EOPs, move-ins, or we gotta move anyone out. Business activity, same thing, we have 21 occupied units out of 28, seven of those are vacant. Two of those units are now in eviction status. NCHPI, I have 15 out of 30, and 15 of those units are vacant. Any questions?
Do you have a question about NCHPI? Your family's got 30 units?
That's what I have in the computer.
Okay.
I had a question on Lakefront Estates. There's 13 vacant and eight in MOD, is the 13 include those eight?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So it's not 21 total empty? Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Ms. Cooper? I'd like to thank you for this new report. It's very.
I was gonna say this anyway. You're lying. I really need to eat. This very detail, I was.
It's clear, we appreciate that, so much clearer.
Thank you, Eden.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think we're good, thank you. Next, we've got our finance report. Do you have anybody filling in to?
Brittany Snack will say. And so, all I have for the finance report are the list of checks. So if there are any questions regarding the checks, I don't have any finances at this time.
All right, so we have our claims list. If there's any questions on these. And then, I've got budget update on here, because we know that we kind of rushed our budget, like, we had to pass it, otherwise, we wouldn't continue the funding. So, we are gonna have to update that, how much we've done on, like, our training budget. Have we blown it already? Because we've done two trainings, basically, out of that budget. So, we gotta see where we're at. And that's gonna take a little bit of time, but it does something that needs to be done. Maintenance report, is Clem still here?
He is not.
Tanisha, can you? You're with maintenance, can you let us know what's going on? Just throw you right in the fire.
Yeah. I'll get you four. I am Tanisha McGovern with Michigan City House and Third Maintenance. As of today, for me, I'm Chief of the Board, and I'm new ED Tiffany, for having me back on the team. So far, so good with the cleaning and the maintenance with the units. My main issue so far is the locking of the doors.
They don't lock, or you can't get them unlocked?
Well, they need to be changed, and, because that would keep the constant unwanted traffic coming in and out of the buildings, which would then alleviate the constant debris of beer cans and cigarettes and, you know, all those nonchalant things that we don't need. Clem is not here, so, but just honestly, he has, he's still in the rest of his state, banking, you know. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm not happy. You know, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm like the head, the big, the big, the big cahoon, or whatever, happy, but it's just, it's just, it's not. You know? And I live here on this property, and I want to be safe, and I'm sure that there are other individuals, tenants, that want to be safe on the property as well. So, I think to start off with, that the doors, they're really, it's just checking, it really, it is, but I do appreciate the opportunity, letting me back in to, you know, put a little spit shine on the situation, you know? And, you know, I wanna be a product of the problem, I wanna be a product of the solution. So, I'll go give a clam tomorrow, or later, or next week, to try to, so we, that way, we can all be on board for the maintenance sometime.
Okay.
Any questions?
Good, thank you.
All right. Again, I'm gonna get you four.
All right, that brings us to the Director's Report.
So, I don't really have much, I wasn't here for the month of March, but I want to say, just thank you for the warm welcome. The staff has been wonderful, I appreciate everyone making me feel at home. I'm really excited to be here, we have a lot of work to do. While you all were in Vegas, I was here by myself, struggling through some of the most important things that we need to do right away, obviously, the budget. We have to get an admin plan revised, an ACOP procurement, and our personnel plan, all of that needs to be revised. We do have services, revision services with Mamah Kay and Associates, I confirm that. So I have already started working on the admin plan and the ACOP, so that'll take me a little bit of time to get to, just doing a lot of housekeeping, getting familiar with the area. I do have a meeting next week with our Chief of Police, to discuss our properties and our relationship moving forward, so I'm really excited about that, and just trying to put out more fire at a time. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Attorney Graves?
Attorney Graves, as you heard earlier from Ms. Warren, one of the evictions that was turned over to our office has been dismissed due to the being an agreement with the resident to enter into a payment agreement, otherwise, all outstanding litigation are on page four. I've been in contact with the new ED on some things that are coming for NCHA, and I'm not gonna steal her thunder by talking about any of those, but there are some exciting times ahead. Our office will be working with her on maintenance, sure that's another thing that she's looking to do, her, hey, we get done, but there's some exciting times ahead.
Great. Any questions for the attorney? Thank you. All right, new business. We haven't had subcommittees. I know that I was on the nominee committee, when we found our new executive director, and the finance committee, but that was really just me. We need to get back into having committees, especially since we've got a lot of policies that need to kind of, we don't all need to know everything about what's going on, but it would help if we understand the policies that we're approving and enacting. So if we could have committees that were like, a rules committee, something like that, where they can go over, maybe a three-person committee, and then each person in the committee takes, you know, one person goes under HATMA, another person Inspire, another person looks up procurement, and there's a lot of different resources available, as well as a lot of training available online, to understand these a little better, and we'll work with the executive director and the staff to make sure that our policies are in line with our vision and our mission. So, do we have any ideas for committees that, like, we need a resident services committee, we don't have any sort of resident outreach?
We have, a while back, I think it was prior to you, we had several different committees set up, and people were assigned to them. I know this is a resident, it's a security, there was one that you were, Kenny, we met like, maybe twice, Tala, he was on a couple of them. We had some designated committees.
Right.
Maybe we need to go back, and I can, I'd be willing to go back into our minutes, to find out what those were, and maybe we can revisit those that way, but, and they weren't the actual policy.
Right, no.
They were actual committees that we were working on, it was like, two or three people curbed, you were on the communication line, something with technology.
Me and Kenny at the turn?
Yeah. So, I'd be willing to look those up and bring those back, and we can refresh our minds on those.
Okay. Yeah, I know that there were some committees, and Brittany had a list, but it didn't have any names as members of any of those. And they weren't even committees that, well, they weren't committees that we were even using, it was just like, a default list. And of course, the nominee committee wasn't one of them, for instance. So, yeah, we need to work on getting our committees restructured, so that we get things done. HATMA policy updates, Inspire policy updates, like I said, from the training, and even from when HUD was here, it was apparent that there's holes in our policies. So we have to, we're gonna have to do some work there. And whether we do it in committees, or if we just let Tiffany do all the work, and we just go, "Yeah, it sounds good to us," we gotta do something, because we have to be in compliance with state law, and again, with our mission and our vision. And that, all of them, personnel policies, bylaws, procurement policies. I know, like, procurement policies, we did the training, where there's like, a 200-page handbook for procurement that we can use, and it's a lot of reading, and, like I said, just go through and understand what the policies are that we're trying to put into place.
Chairman Lonnie, let's go.
Certainly.
What I would like to do is, when I have the, when the policies are ready for a board approval, we would have an actual presentation, so it wouldn't just be something that I would send to you for approval, but there would actually be a presentation where there are questions and discussed. Now, that could lead, the subcommittees can lead up to that, but I just wanted to make that clarity, that you wouldn't get a policy to approve the next day, we would do some type of presentation, just wanted the board to know that.
I respect that, I agree.
So you can see what was changing, not only just what is it now, but what is it changing, and why is it changing?
Nice.
See, and I know, along with the policies, we're looking at pick errors, and there's a service we already have, we just, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Absolutely.
Or that we can add to PHA Web?
So, our software company, PHA Web, offers a pick submission service. For those that may not be familiar, when our staff makes any changes, when we get a new resident, or a new HCP participant, we add their name in our software system, we have a form that we create, it's called a 5-8, it's uploaded to HUD. And so, it's important that that 5-8, or that family report, is submitted properly to HUD. When HUD does a lot of our reporting, especially for CMAP, they get the information to, there's about four or five indicators for CMAP, that HUD specifically pick pulls out of the pick system through these submissions. So it's very important that the submission's accurate. So what happens is, when the staff upload a submission, once it's uploaded, they can get an error report back, so HUD doesn't always accept them. There could be things wrong with the 5-8 itself, it could be that the family is no longer in the sit in the program, or deceased, or so forth. And so, what I would like to do, is I found out, when I was learning so much about the Housing Authority last week, is that our pick rates in HUD are actually lower than what they're supposed to be. We have a submission rate for our voucher program at 93.5% and for our public housing program of 94%. So that's under HUD's minimum of 95. So basically, I need to be able to get all of our 5-8s up in the system. So whatever work we're doing, if it's not uploaded properly, we don't get credit for it, is the easiest way to say that. And so, I found out our PHA software offers a submission service, where they will upload for us, which is not, which is fine, we can do that ourselves, but they offer that, but the great thing about this is they have a corrections aspect. So when those errors are, when those 5-8s are sent back to us, and there's error, the staff can actually call PHA Web, put in a tech request, and they can be walked through the errors. Doesn't sound like a lot, but sometimes correcting 5-8 errors are a nuisance. I'm seeing some nodding over there, and so, it's not always easy to get corrected. And I really like the fact that PHA Web would walk them through that correction. It's an additional charge of $150 a month. And so, what I also was hoping is that we do this for a time period, and then they're going to be so experienced in correcting these pick errors, that we can actually potentially cancel this subscription.
I have a question on that. What are the errors? Is it typographical, or? So, anything that errors out? Spell checks, or?
So, maybe, it could be, so you have some that are common, maybe you put the social security number in wrong, and so, it doesn't, it's not pulling it up, because the social security is wrong. It could be that the person is actually residing in another household, I'm at another household, I'm sorry, in another housing authority, they could be on a duplicate program, the person could be deceased. And so, there's some errors that are going, that HUD's gonna put back, that are not agency errors. Then there are some agency errors, the dates are wrong, and so, when we get an error report back from HUD after it's submitted, it tells you what's wrong, but it doesn't necessarily tell you how to fix it. And so, there's a lot of trainings that you can do for pick training, but I like this one, because we don't necessarily have time to sit in the class for pick training, but as they're working on these errors, they can put in a ticket, and they're actually walked through that error, which is, would kinda grab me about that.
So that we know what the error is before HUD tells us what the?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So we have an idea, so there'll be an error message, and it kindly gives you an idea. And sometimes, if there's, all the 5-8s have to be submitted in chronological order. Well, if I submitted a 5-8 that I didn't know that there was anything wrong with, so let's say a family has multiple changes, or there's multiple corrections in a month's period, and I didn't know that, I have to actually, that I can boil down everything I did to get to the report that was the error. And so, sometimes, that can be a little tedious, and need a little help, a little guidance, and I'm not gonna be able to do that for everybody.
Sounds like a good service, Clem.
Yes.
In China, they also told us that if they go into the dashboard, they would tell you what the errors are, they stayed inside of the dashboard, and because pick is correct to shut down the office.
Yeah.
They told us pick was gonna shut down.
It's switching to a new system.
To the hot system.
That will. In other words, make sure our policies are in line.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next, so, we voted to hire our new ED, but we didn't actually sign the resolution to make it so.
Oh, no! I've been working three weeks.
So, we need to actually take a vote, pass a resolution to?
I still got time to run! I think I'm gonna have to go through this door, though.
The chairman is correct on that, that there was actually not a vote for a resolution, but there was a vote on the action, so you're stuck.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. That's what you say now.
The guy that tried to 107, yes, our office did draft a resolution, in a early meeting with the ED, and I left it on print. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go over to our office in Michigan City, print it, and break back on over, this meeting is going pretty fast, so.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Let's go ahead and do the roll call for the vote, though, for the resolution, do we need to do that?
No.
Oh, we don't, okay, we just need to sign it, okay. So, as we know, HUD came and visited us, and we have not heard back from them. We're probably gonna have to do an emergency or session when we do get that notice, because we have 45 days to respond, so whatever that is, you know, we gotta have a plan of attack and discuss it as soon as possible, we don't wanna wait till mid-May, if we get it, you know, tomorrow, to talk about what we're gonna do. So, and BDO, we also had them onsite, they were looking at our finances, and we have not heard back from them yet, although that should happen any day now. Did you have any questions about the HUD or BDO at this time?
No, just a waiting game, they just gotta wait.
And that brings us to training, which we all just did, and I think we did learn some stuff. If it's okay, I'd like to ask a couple members of staff to come and tell us what they learned, what really stuck in their brain.
Oh, gosh, the kid is going to have.
Come up to the podium, please.
Well, we learned that kids will be very dark, we extended everything to our pick errors completed, you know, before that timeframe. We also tried to learn a little bit about even rain calculations with HATMA, but our classes were kind of overflowing, but we did, I enjoyed all of the classes there. We touched on Inspire, you know, a little bit, I've already been looking at Inspire and HATMA, and trying to keep up with all of the changes to that. So it was a very interesting trip. I didn't think it was gonna be as informative as it was, that was my first time going to nail rod, you know, I was impressed, I wanted to, I think all of us did. We thank you for letting us attend the trip, and we hope to go to MUD.
Okay. Thank you. Did any of the commissioners have anything on their training that stuck to them, or that they really needed to? So, yeah, good job, or is that something we need to work on?
I would just like to make comment, but I guess, all the training, what stuck out to me is being critical, is the Inspire inspections that's coming around, and it looks like they delayed, delayed, delayed due to COVID and other things, and they've delayed for so long, that they're probably gonna be anxious to get at it when it starts. And I just hope for our team here to let us know that we're ready to go on it, because there's a lot of underlying credits, and being able to leapfrog or skip other inspections, depending on how well we do on this one. And if we don't do well on your first one, then you've got reaction, they're gonna come back in six months and reevaluate, we have to write up corrections on that, and do an entire performance review on ourselves, and it just gets ugly the worse we do. So, I'm looking forward to it. Our team, I did talk to some of our maintenance folks there, and they seem pretty confident that they understand what they're looking for, and how to find those life, death, safety criticals that Inspire inspectors are really gonna be looking at, so.
I have a cheat sheet, too. I gave me a cheat sheet for Inspire.
And it's up to our eyes to catch it before the inspector, so that we can correct it right away. And I'm just, I'll be nervous and anxiously awaiting those dates, and it's, it sounds to me like that it's really gonna be a tedious time, because all of our units, all of them, except the ones that's on MOD, is subject to inspection, and we won't know which units it's gonna be until we're here. So it's quite an endeavor. Okay, good.
The only thing I'm gonna say about training is, I was very impressed that each, there were so many different sessions to choose from, from ELD, staff, maintenance commissioners, and one of the things that I was impressed about was that each and every session, whether you attended it or not, had PDFs. So even though you didn't go to it, you can go and basically see everything that that session entailed, so I was very impressed with that, with those deals, to be able to have that.
And just for the, anybody can get any of the PDFs for their classes, we downloaded all of them. all of them from the commissioners, all the way down to maintenance, so if you need, you know, a PDF, or you want some of the literature, we, we had it here for you, we can email you. You can also find them on the Y app.
Right, right, that's where I, online.
It's going to be going soon, that's why we keep downloading. Last year, you know, it stayed for a while, and then it disappeared, so that's why we tried to download, so we can always go back for it.
And then, like I said, training, we're, we've got to be close to our budget for the year, if not beyond it, but there's a lot of free training available. Mr. Dixon was showing me that there's different sites that we might pay for one thing, like, say payroll, and the payroll has built-in training. I know HUD has a lot of free training. I know that as a member of Nail Rod, we've got access to their training, and there's a lot of training we can get that doesn't cost us any more money, but still gets us up to snuff on all of our policies and stuff. I know on hudexchange.com, there's something specifically for us commissioners, that some other boards require their commissioners to be, like, it would be grounds for removal if you don't complete the Lead the Way training within, say, six months or whatever. That might be something we can add to our bylaws. I don't think any of us have gone through it yet. I included just the, the public housing basic foundations from Lead the Way in your packets, just to kind of get an idea on what, what they can cover there. I mean, you log in, you create your own profile, and it even keeps track of what courses you're doing, so you get certified on different topics that we might not know that much about, but we know, we don't necessarily have to expend a whole lot of money and time putting everybody to learn it, or we could, we'd even do it as, like, a weekend session or something like that, without, you know, kind of keep our expenses down. And aside from that, anybody else have anything to say? Any other motions on the floor?
That's motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
I'm in.
We're adjourned. Thank you.